The Putnam County Board of County Commissioners and the City of Palaca City Commissioners. My name is Larry, Larry Harvey. I am the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. Mayor?
And we'd also like to read the call for the cities. As you're hereby notified that a special call meeting of the Palaca City Commission is called to be held on Monday, April 10th, 2017, at the Board of County Commissioners Meeting Chambers at 2509 Krill Avenue, Suite 100, Palaca, Florida to commence at 6:00 P.M. The purpose of the meeting is to hold a joint meeting of the City of Palaca Commission and the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The invocation will be led by Commissioner Goddard and Mayor, who the pleasure?
Commissioner, Commissioner Borum will lead us in the pledge.
All stand.
Bow your head. Lord, thank you for allowing us to meet here today. Lord, thank you for these people who are very concerned with our community. Lord, we just ask that you help us as we try to make good decisions in this room, Lord. We just thank you so much for Jesus, and in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let me just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to take a moment to introduce our staff, and then I'll let the mayor introduce his staff. To my left over here, Stacy Papel is our acting county administrator and budget director. Stacy, thank you. Commissioner Pickens, over to my left, Commissioner Pickens and Commissioner Goddard, the vice chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Lible could not be in attendance tonight. He had a prior commitment that he just could not get out of. So, thank you. And our county attorney over here to the right, Mr. Stacy Manning. Thank you, Stacy.
Okay, Mayor.
Okay, to my right is the city manager, Terry Suggs. Our city attorney, Mr. Don Holmes is also present. In the back of the room, we've got our planning director, Mr. Thad Crowe. We also have, for the fire department, Mr. J.R. Grimes. Captain Brad Forsyth from the police department, Jonathan Griffith, who's our public works director. Betsy Driggers, who is our city clerk, and Matt Reynolds, who's our finance director. I did pretty good. I don't think I missed anybody.
All right. I also like to let the record show our clerk of the court, Tim Smith, is in the audience, and our supervisor of elections, Mr. Charles Overturf, is here tonight, too. So, thank you very much for coming. Our first order of business, and I'll turn the microphone over to the mayor to lead this part, is our public comment portion of our meeting. So, if there's any public that would like to speak, Mayor, you have the...
Okay. At this time, we'll entertain anyone here for public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. No topics of discussion will be voted on or taken action on at this time. So, if there's anyone here for public comment, please fill out the appropriate speaker card and come forward. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seen no one. We'll close public comment.
By the way, we both have a gavel, so he brought his and I got mine. Might be one of those nights. Okay, the next topic is Putnam County Board of County Commission requested topics. These are just topics that we have discussed randomly, and tonight's just going to be an open mic, if you will, conversation about how the county and the city of Palaca can work together. And let me kind of preface this by saying we are visiting all of our counties that touch us right now. St. John's, Alachua, Clay, Flagler, and Volusia, and Marion County to look at having dialogue with them in a special meeting. So, next Monday night, Alachua County Commissioners will be in this room, and then on the next Monday night, we'll be down in Salt Springs for Marion County Commissioners. And just basically trying to rise the tide, if you will, and see if the boat floats. And, you know, if we can help Palaca, or Palaca can help us, then we all benefit from that. And it's not going to stop there. We're going to reach out to other municipalities and work together, too. So, one of our first items of discussion tonight is meandering boundaries and enclaves. Mr. Tompkins, you brought the map with you. Press Tompkins is our public works director. Why don't you come up and point out the boundaries of the city of Palaca we know of Putnam County, so... Council members and commissioners, while he's coming up, we're not going to be so formal tonight, so if you just want to ask questions, you don't actually have to come through the chair. You can just talk.
I know it's very difficult to see. We tried to get one sheet of paper, the whole map on it. Commissioner Goddard is right behind you. If I can move up there, Commissioner?
Yes, please do, sir. Do you need a, we've got a cordless microphone right here for you.
Can you see?
Yes, ma'am.
Can anybody hear me all right? What we, we kind of, the, it's hard to see from, from here, but the green shaded area is county-owned property, and we have the red boundary line of the city limits, and you can see how the city limits just meander all over the place. We have little pockets like right here that's county-owned, surrounded by the city. We have other pockets like, right here that's county-owned, cities all around us. We couldn't gerrymander this any better if we tried to, to be honest with you. Somebody said the other day, "It looks like Swiss cheese," and I said, "That's a pretty good analogy on it." So, we just, I put this together just so we'd have some kind of graphic to look at to show where the city boundaries were in relation to county boundaries. And as you can see, they do meander all over the place. And I know there's a lot of history, a lot of reason why things were done, when they were done, and I don't have the history. All I did was put a map together for talking points. Mayor, I think you have a...
Just want to get a better management point.
Does Jonathan, Jonathan, you want to come up and talk about something? Come on up. Grab a microphone so we can show. Grab that microphone from him.
While he's walking up, you know, some of the history of why we so, why we so split up is because we had water and sewer, and the county didn't have it, and as people's wells and stuff septic went out, we were good enough to bring them in so that we could take care of people. It would be a really good idea if we could square us up. Really. I hope y'all hear me.
Say that again so we can all hear you.
Really need to square us up. The only way I know who's in the city limits is what kind of, what kind of trash can you got? If it's a green road light, it's us.
Just one quick observation. I will say that the annexation pretty much followed the commercial corridors, so you had St. John's Avenue, Highway 19, and out Krill. And most of the enclaves are primarily residential areas with unimproved rightaways.
So, how can we, how can we square this up?
I guess that's the question.
That would probably take a very long workshop to work through, all the, all the history of what, why things were done and, and how we create it. Like Jonathan said, they followed a lot of the corridors, but, you know, we, how did this piece get in? How did this piece get in? And then, you know, how do we ma, and I'm talking from a county level, how do I maintain one road right here where half the lots in the city and half the lots are in the county? Those are things I think we really need to kind of clean up and, and focus on. Trying to get those cleaned up before we try to tackle a lot of the other areas in here. I mean, you, you look at the map, it's almost self-explanatory. Like, we got, you know, one little enclave here that's city-owned, but county's all around it. It can be done, but like I said, it's going to take a long workshop for working through a lot of the history of why things were annexed and why they weren't annexed.
Right. I, I think one other thing to add to that is we actually have a study which talks about really the cost-benefit of, of annexing in certain properties. There, in particular, Mr. Crowe and both Mr. Griffith can give detail as to what the study says, but it takes into consideration about six enclaves and how those enclaves are, affect each entity from a financial standpoint and also from a services standpoint. And I think historically, we all understand the problem, but for those who don't, the biggest part is when we start looking at costs of service, we start looking at some of the, we start looking at some of the memorandums that are in place or the interlocal agreements that are in place. Oftentimes, we'll find law enforcement or the fire department having two agencies go to the same call, and just as Ms. Brown said, the determination is made by the garbage can because they can determine if it's a green can, whether it's the city, or if it's not, it's the county. So, if you take areas like Roland Hills, for example, where the developer developed the backside of that, of that development for the purposes of, it was city property, but they didn't develop the front side, so halfway down the block, it's county and the backside is city. And so, you end up really, well, you end up really using extra services in areas where you don't necessarily have to. And I think if we look at this thing from a logical standpoint and hit the low-hanging fruit first, and those are the areas that are kind of included in that study, it, it makes it a lot easier. And I think once we do those, we can go back and start to look at the more logical areas of what the true boundaries are. Because people who are not familiar with this community, when they see certain areas, then you're saying, "Hey," and I'm taking them on a tour, and I'm saying, "Hey, we're in the city." No, we're in the county. And they're, and it's, you're literally a block or two blocks away, and it still looks like, you know, a, a more of an urban setting, for lack of any other term. It becomes very confusing. And I think that, you know, when we've got truck lines that are running through certain areas, and there's an opportunity to tee off, it makes more sense overall as we start to move towards trying to have water and sewer throughout our entire county, that we start to do those things, particularly since, you know, our water, you know, our, our water plant is only running at about 30% capacity. We have the ability to serve most of the area that's considered to be 32177 Palaca, even including the unincorporated areas. And I think it's a benefit to both sides. We've got some situations now where the city actually sells water to the county, and then it's resold. And so, creating those opportunities where it's a win-win situation, we can start to stop dupli, we can not duplicate services and create more efficiency of operations for both sides. It really works. I think the thing that's happened over the last couple of years that I've really seen is I've started to see city and county staff work closer together to deal with issues that may not have necessarily been thought through when the interlocals were, were brought about from either entity. But on a day-to-day operational basis, they, they're closer to it than we'll ever be, and we'll find that taken care of. You know, we'll give an example of me and the Commissioner Harvey. I get a phone call saying, "Hey, you guys need to take care of this area." And, and so, we got on it. We started looking at it, and it was an area right by Palaca High School because we maintain everything up to Williams Street, and from Williams Street on, on St. John's Avenue, it's county maintained. And so, by the time we made a couple of phone calls, you know, the simple answer was, "Hey, it's in the county, but it's, it's in the city." And so, what happens is the staff got together from both sides, and they just, they had the quick solution for it. Commissioner Harvey didn't have to pull out his weed eater, and everything was taken care of. And so, those are the things that we need to look at because they're simple fixes to some of these, to these problems that I think we've made more complex through legislation, and we haven't just really taken a more common sense approach to them.
And I agree with you, and I think the staff and our staff and your staff have been trying to work a lot closer together and
Yes.
and make sure we're not stepping on each other's toes. I know Jonathan and I have gotten together several times, and I am working with Jonathan to try to get your interlocal agreement because it was dated, what, Jonathan, '94, '99, something like that? So, we're trying to bring those interlocals to our commission and to your commission with them updated. So, we can try to iron out a lot of these situations that you're talking about.
You need to also add your streets, your roads and streets in the city limits because you all have streets that are in bad shape, and people are calling us, eating us up about them, and there's nothing we can do, like going out to St. John's towards the college and things. If we come together and work on things, and the first way to get to them is to start. For, for 30-some years, we've been talking the same talk. I want to see us walk this walk.
Well, Press, you want to talk about St. John's Avenue?
She's saying we're into item B.
Item two.
I know it's on the agenda, but that makes the point.
We do have a grant or a DOT project now to redo St. John's Avenue. We're working with Jonathan now because there's some utilities need to be relocated in conjunction with the resurfacing, so we're working through all those issues now, and hopefully within the next year or two that, that we'll have this thing done.
And we're trying to get those utilities moved prior to us doing something.
Yes, sir.
Doing some resurfacing on St. John's.
Right.
Because I don't know about you, but my phone rings off the hook when someone says, "What were y'all thinking about?" You know, going out there and redoing a road, and then you have to dig it up to put new piping under it. So, if we can get this done ahead of time, we don't, none of us get a black eye over that, and we all look good doing that, and that's good government.
We are trying to do that, so we are working on that. Like I said, we've been working together on that. So, I think we're, we are forming better relationships between the city and the county now, and, and we're getting things accomplished. And just as an example, we just, we were paving Comfort Road, and we got with y'all to repave Crystal Cove, and I think we probably saved the county, the city, Jonathan, about $30,000, $35,000 by piggybacking onto our contract and not paying mobilization charge and stuff like that. So, you know, working together helps everybody.
It, it does, and I, I see more and more of it, and I, I think that's something to be commended, and that's the way this, this, this system should work. Because at the end of the day, we, we all have the same goal, and that's to make this community better overall. And I, I see it, and I definitely applaud everyone who's been working diligently towards that. When we talk about the St. John's Avenue project, one of the major issues is, is the water, the water line breaks. And, you know, it's, it's no secret that the city of Palaca has a, we've, we've got about an $18 to $28 million problem, depends on which map you want to use, either way, the numbers are astronomical, that we have to resolve. And when we talk about St. John's Avenue, it's critical for us to be, to go in and replace those water lines prior to having that road redone because it, it just makes, it makes much more sense and a more efficient use of money at that point. We've had some discussions in meetings coming close to this meeting about ways in which we could brainstorm about trying to get those things done. And, and I think that it, it's time for, that's the first step to the partnership for the city and the county because it's critical from a life safety standpoint. We're now seeing emergency vehicles take alternate routes, and we don't want that because every second counts towards life. But I think Comfort Road was a prime example of what happens when the great minds of the community come together to make things work, and we definitely appreciate you guys coming in and, and really, and bringing us on board with that project because your, you know, your number was in the eighties, was $80 per unit, and we were looking at about 105. And so, that, that, that saved us a significant amount of money, which allowed us to be able to go out and do another project in the community. So, they can hear me. It's only a few people here.
Well, the recording needs to pick it up.
He'll get it.
All right. Commissioners, any questions on item A since we already jumped to item B? Okay. And item B, Press, before you leave, let's go ahead and do the boundaries of item B. How we're going to, what we're going to do with St. John's Avenue, starting where and ending where?
Starts at, let me find St. John's Avenue. It starts at 19, and we're going all the way through past Ziegler. I think we're going, Jonathan, is it going all the way to 309? To Ziegler?
Yeah, I think we're Ziegler.
Yeah, okay, okay. But it'll go through the intersection at Ziegler, then we'll stop there.
Okay.
Yeah, and the city's also looking at additional resurfacing, taking it back to the east in the future.
Okay. But that, that has been approved by DOT, so we're going through the process now with them.
That's a scrap program, correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
So, the other thing with, as we're talking about St. John's Avenue, kind of moving between item A and B that we all need to be conscious of is, St. John's Avenue, from the riverfront to the hospital, we go from city to county six times, and those are the enclaves. That's the simplest enclave for us to deal with because, you know, at different points, if you're on the right side of the road or the left side of the road, you're in the city, you're in the county. And it, it really becomes confusing, I think, to citizens from a services standpoint and also to staff. And so, that's something that we really need to address and deal with. And that, again, low-hanging fruit, St. John's Avenue, dealing with that issue as we come up. There's a logical breaking point there. That breaking point is outside of the hospital. Once you pass the hospital and you pass the apartments, and we start getting into the business park area, that's where the breaking point, really at the breaking, at the business park. That's where the, the natural breaking point for city to county should be when we start talking about St. John's Avenue. And I, I think that would be an area that we can look at. It's addressed in a study.
In addition to, to the St. John's Avenue, talking about the same corridor, we're talking Kennedy, we're talking Wells, St. John's, all of that, Jonathan and myself and one of the county individuals, we were working on a project in there, and we were struggling with trying to figure out, okay, well, who, whose responsibility was it? And it's just a simple fix, but the, it was in a gray area, so it just took a, a while for them to even figure out where we need to go with that, and finally figured out the county would, would be responsible for the sleeve piece that I was looking for. And also, this area over here with the interface, worked closely with the individual over there having to repair a, I guess it was a, a, a very deep repair for, for the, um, there was a very deep repair for the, um, there was a pothole there where if a car come out, there's water over the top of it, you know, it damaged the front end if you have a low, um, you have a low-profile car. So, with that being said, I did work with the county as it related to get that fixed, and that was not a city deal, but I got a, I, I had picked up a call as it related to that. So, again, that's where we have the, uh, working together between both the city and the county, so...
I would just like to note, Commissioners, that the enclaves that you are speaking about, north and south of St. John's Avenue, kind of just beyond this area right here, past Mosley, it will take increased cooperation between the city and county because you do have to take into consideration the infrastructure is vastly deficient. You have dirt roads with no stormwater infrastructure, and if that is just transferred into the city, it's not feasible to think that that's going to be taken to an improved condition that would meet FDOT specification. So, I think the interlocal, which Press and I have been talking about, we'll talk about those cooperative efforts, but it's not something that the city can just take on all on its own. It might have to be something similar to what we did this year with the resurfacing, piggybacking, and kind of taking advantage of the county's buying power as well as some of their contract administrative efforts.
All right, good. Thank you very much. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Can we bring up some other streets to remind you all of?
You can bring up what this is, your, your meeting, too.
Oh, well, nine, we have 19th Street where the, where the high school, I mean, Jenkins is. That's a, a joint road, and I think we have River Street, two or three of them that come up. And when people call us and ask for some service or repair on those roads, we have to say, "Well, they're in the county." So, probably need to get a list of things that are county roads in the city, and then work to, to try to get them brought together and do our repair work and grant stuff together so that we can do it more efficiently and get more roads and stuff straightened up.
I, I agree. I think Jonathan and Press are going to work together on that very hard and bring, bring some, some of that to light to us. And whatever we can do to make that happen, I believe this commission and council wants to do that. The next thing, gas transmission lines. We have some gentlemen here from Palaca Gas Authority. And if you'll come up and introduce yourself, give your name and address for the record. And talking about county people getting gas and rightaways, so let's have that conversation tonight while we're here. So, if you'll introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Judd Newfeld, and I serve with the Gas Authority, and my address is 554 Cedar Creek Road, Palaca.
Don Kettner, I'm the general manager. I live at 102 Terry Drive.
Well, welcome.
I'd like to start, if I may, by just saying a word to thank you to each one of you for your hard work for our community. It's very, very commendable, and it's very nice to see this united front. I don't know if this is the first, but it's the first I've heard of it, and it's very, very commendable because I think a strong community is a healthy one, and this makes for a strong community. Now, what do you want from us?
If you'll move that microphone closer.
Sure.
There you go.
Is that better?
You got to get it almost right on you to talk. Basically, we're talking today about the gas transmission lines going out to county customers, and then the other concern was the, the rightaway that we had talked about before. So, why don't we have that discussion tonight while you're here?
Uh, the, the rightaways are, you know, the permit fees. I think that's what we're referring to. We, we do try to expand into the county as much as possible, and anytime you run, incur additional expenses, it makes it more difficult. I know the, we've had a lot of discussions about the rightaway fees, and, you know, just to expand our, our system, like I said, it, it adds, on some jobs, 10, 15, 20% of the cost just in the rightaway itself if we had to absorb all the fees.
Are those improved rightaways, or what I'm talking about, you're not tearing up roads?
We're not, no. We, we do everything we can to stay away from the asphalt. You know, we'll bore under the roads. All, most of our mains are on the side of the roads, and any new ones we install are off the edge of the road. We try to keep a minimum of three feet from any paved rightaway.
How far does your gas lines go out throughout the unincorporated areas? I know they go out to what, Horsemans Club Road, is that correct?
Yeah, we're, we're on Horsemans Club. We go out as far as Stokes Landing.
Oh, wow.
And on West Panal, we, or, yeah, East Panal, we go right out to 19. At Krill, we go out just into the Francis area, Slaughter Road.
Wow.
And we go down St. John's Avenue, just a little, about a few hundred feet past Ziegler.
And I think if I can add one other thing, I think when, when we were talking with, with the gentleman there from the county, it was so wonderful to be able to work together with a plan, and we, our goal is to bring safe, efficient, effective, natural gas to every business and every home that we can reach. And we know the value's huge, and when we do a job, we maintain the job, too. So, if we put in a, a line in the rightaway, it, it's not the county or the city maintenance department that take care of it. The Gas Authority does for its entire service life. So, the impact of maintenance is not increased expense for either government.
Good deal. Good. Mayor, do you have anything?
No, I, I think the Gas Authority does a great job in planning. The vision is very strong, and, you know, the leadership is wonderful, particularly with the, the board that's been composed and the staff that's there. I, I think that the time has really come for us overall to look at providing the right infrastructure throughout the county as a whole. We're, we're years behind the mark as it relates to where we should be from an infrastructure standpoint. You know, my vision would be that this entire county at some point have water and sewer, that we have, you know, we get away from well and septic, that we get to a point where we've got the option of having natural gas in place, and that all those things are there. One, it increases capacity for businesses. It makes more shovel-ready projects come about. And the other thing is, it increases the value of these, of these homes and these properties, and it brings us, you know, into the 21st century. And so, I, I think overall, if we can start moving the ball towards a comprehensive plan where we take advantage of the resources that we have, it's, it's time out for, you know, the city to have their own system, and the Gas Authority to have their own system, and the county to have their own system and resources. If we pool what we have together, then we can actually make Putnam better. And that's, and I think that's what this meeting is about, and I'm, I'm really excited about, you know, where this goes. I, I don't want this to be a meeting that just feel-good talking. I want it to be a meeting where we start, where we start the ball working towards a plan, and that's what, that's what we need to be doing.
I agree. Mr. Tompkins, do you want to come up and add anything about the rightaways? And I should have called on you to come up, and I apologize. And again, Commissioners and council members, feel free to break, to join in the conversation. Don't, you have to come through the chair.
I had several meetings with these gentlemen, and what we did was, we still require a rightaway permit because there's, there's facilities being put in our rightaway. We have waived all the permit fees for the Gas Authority in the spirit of cooperation to help them out and help us out. So, it, it was a win-win for everybody, but we still require permits so we know what's under the ground there. But other than that, we have waived the permit fees to help them out.
Well, and that also helps our constituents out.
It does. It helps everybody out.
It's a win-win situation. We can work together.
That's correct.
No one wants to say anything? Are y'all all this quiet? Because my board doesn't like that.
We're, we're not used to the technology.
Y'all just holler across the room? Is that what you're...
No, I kick them under the table.
We're, we're a little closer over in City Hall Chamber, so...
Well, thank you very much, Judd, Don, and Press. We appreciate that, and we look forward to working together in the future to bring more natural gas to our citizens. Next topic is item D. Mayor, why don't you lead that one off?
You're doing a great job.
Okay. Next item is our business park, located out on St. John's Avenue again. So, Mr. Hammonds, you and I traded some emails the other day about the business park and about, the first thing I want to talk to is about the mapping situation that we need to deal with. And about, the first thing I want to talk to is about the mapping situation that we need to deal with.
Well, as all of you know, it's an old project started in late nineties. Most of the developments that's there occurred in the early two thousands through about two thousand and five, the spec building and the call center. I started about two thousand and nine trying to get the land use and zoning corrected, do it correct. The city's been, has worked with us, um, and been very helpful through that process. Again, we've always been trying to do this thing on a shoestring. And we got a grant a couple of years ago that would help us develop the stormwater system and get a permit for, uh, that stormwater system. So what we got out of that grant was primarily the permit for the stormwater system, which we have in hand. It's good for probably another four years approximately, depending. And, um, then a seal survey of exactly what's out there right now. The basic problem is this, to go any further with this thing and have it shovel-ready is, it's gonna take some money. Cause utilities have to be ex- extended, um, through much of the park. Sewer and water doesn't go to all the lots, um, other things don't go through all the lots. We do have the road, central road through the park and plan no other roads at this time. That was something that was done a couple of years ago, I think with Better Place Plan money.
How far does sewer?
But you're kind of an impasse.
How far does sewer and water go inside the business park?
Uh, only about to the... About as far as the spec building and about as far as the, um, call center.
P R C building?
Yes.
And we already learned that gas goes out to St. John's Avenue to the apartment complex, and it stops right there. Okay.
Um, but the basic problem is that, is, is what you need to have to have it shovel-ready and be really marketable is not there at this time. What you need to have to actually plat it into lots is not there at this time. So again, what would be necessary is some sort of interlocal agreement that allows us to bypass some things. Um, but that's something we would have to, uh, certainly discuss.
What kinds of things?
Well, again, right now, it's physically impossible, given the city's code, for us to get to a final plat without a lot of money. So I mean, again, it would take some discussion and an agreement of some sort that kind of substitutes for.
Well, the business park's important to Putnam County and, and also to Placa, so we need to work this out. Mayor Hill?
Uh, Mr. Crowe, can you come up as well?
So, um, I'll just kind of give some insight as well. I think Mr. Hammonds has done a great job of kind of outlining what the issues are.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, council people, um, they had Crowe Plan and Director City Placa. Uh, our plating process is partly driven by state law, which requires that we have in place subdivision rules. Essentially, once you're dividing more than three lots, we have to comply with state law, um, to make sure it's done in kind of a rational manner, uh, in terms of in- infrastructure and, uh, roads and everything else. However, our planning ordinance does have some flexibility built into it, which we discussed before. Essentially, the city commission has the ability to waive certain elements of the plating requirements. In this case, meaning something we've discussed in terms of flexibility is we could basically, uh, single out the important elements of the, uh, plat. And I think that we've talked about stormwater is important, obviously, cause you don't want flooding. Define that at the outset as much as you can in terms of easements and ponds and whatnot, and roads, access, road access as well. Other than that, I think you have a lot of flexibility in the business park. So one hybrid that we talked about could be a plat essentially that defines as much as possible, um, the road system, the drainage network. And beyond that, our commission could delegate to us the ability to essentially move lot lines around, um, combine lots, split lots, uh, and have more minor utilities such as, uh, water and sewer, uh, move those lines around as well. Um, so we have the ability to have a flexible plat.
Do you have any, Mr. Crowe, do you have a, um, like a P U D like we do here in Putnam County?
We do have a P U D, Mr. Chairman. Um, the business park is a P U D. Uh, all but two lots, I believe, are, are in what we call our planned industrial development. So that itself provides another amount of flexibility. We can, we can tie the P U D, P I D with the plat and have the two kind of work together.
Okay. But I believe we just were, we didn't finish our mapping, and we've lost our state grant. Was that correct on that, Mr. Hammonds?
The grant expired, yes, and, uh, the state was unwilling to extend it. So, yeah, we've written a final report on it, and it's closed out. But we've done everything we can do under that grant. And again, your, your primary issue is going to be the money to extend utilities and do what you need to do to make shovel-ready.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, uh, at my last management team meeting, we had this very discussion on what we might be able to do on the city side to try to facilitate a, uh, an opportunity to bring this thing to closure. So what we've done is we've asked Mr. Crowe, uh, to work closely with Mr. Hammonds and bring something back, uh, that might be beneficial to both the city and the county that we could take to our, our joint commissioners and, uh, see if there's some movement that we might be able to get on this project.
Right. I, I, I would also suggest that we, um, include the chamber. Um, I, I can tell you that, um, both Ms. Jones and, um, Mr. Bergen, we've, um, have experienced, um, with interested industries coming in here, um, some difficulties as it relates to zoning. I, I think we've been accommodating, um, but it slows the process. And so, uh, without putting you guys on the spot, would either one of you want to come up and maybe, um, kind of give at least, um, some insight to some of the, um, the barriers that we've, that you've, um, that you've had, that you dealt with thus far? And, and really, um, just, just how critical is, it is for us to, to kind of make sure we're all on the same plane, for the purposes of bringing, uh, industry into the community?
Dana Jones, President, Putnam County Chamber of Commerce. Good evening. Thank y'all for having this meeting. It's a great opportunity for us, and thank you for including us in the discussion about the business park. Um, Brian and I also have had numerous discussions. You know, we're the entity that's going to help market that, and we've kind of got our hands kind of tied behind our backs, so I really appreciate this discussion. I'm gonna let Brian tell y'all some of the challenges that we've had most recently.
Good evening. I'm Brian Bergen. I'm the Vice President for Economic Development for, with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, I can actually give you a real-world example that I was looking at today. We have a lead come in from Jack's USA, our regional partner. Uh, it would be a thirty million dollar investment, a hundred and seventy jobs. Uh, they're looking to put in a hundred thousand square foot building for pharmaceutical manufacturing. They need thirty-four acres, gas, water, and sewer pad ready to go. We have nothing that would be marketable for that in the county. And those are the types of things that we look at, or I get to see, but, you know, again, we have no opportunity. Because we actually don't have a site with those ready to go and the proper zoning. So those are some of the challenges that we look at. And technically, right now, we can't sell anything out of the business park anyway, without it being plotted or, um, any legal description to sell it. So those are some of our challenges.
So we don't have thirty-four acres anywhere in this county or the city that we could, we can change the zoning and bring those jobs to Putnam County?
Not with water, sewer, and gas there.
And again, it's, it's the complete infrastructure.
Yeah. We have none of those with, businesses are not looking to come in and clear the land, put in the, the infrastructure. They're looking to walk in and build. All that takes time. It would take another ninety days to do all those things at least. And businesses just don't want to spend those extra ninety days.
You know, so that's, that's when, when the conversations come up about places like Comfort Road, um, which are prob- which is probably one of the closest areas that we have, where we have the ability to, to fix those problems. It becomes critical that we look at it and we start to work together like we did before. Um, and really hitting those business areas, those major industrial areas, and making sure that we've got the infrastructure in place. So that when those opportunities come up for hundreds of jobs or a thousand jobs, you know, we're not getting ready. We're already ready.
Yeah. Even Comfort Road has its challenges. We have no, no sewer there. We have gas, and then we have water. The businesses that are sitting there that are available aren't marketable for most of the people that are looking cause they want water, sewer, ready to go.
Ma- Larry, maybe we need to look at doing like we did with the jail at one time, when they wanted to build and come in. They came and, and put in, worked with us and put in for a grant to help run water and sewer lines out to, um, where the jail was going in. And as other people came on that line, I think they get paid back some of their monies or put it together yet. Um, we got a senator coming tomorrow. We used to didn't have any of those people from Washington or Tallahassee coming in here to us. We got an elected official that's a state representative now. And they, y'all laughed at me, but an irritant, you know what an irritant in, in a pearl is? That little grain of sand that you put in at you, and it keeps irritating that, that oyster till it makes that pearl. And so for us to get where we need to go, sometime my grandma would say, you don't mess with tail, you get head. And when these people come in here to us, we need to have a plan put together and sit down here and say, hey, we got this, and this is what we need. Because if they see us working together and leveraging off each other, you got a better chance of, um, getting what we need. And what we need now is the funding to do it. And this president is talking about infrastructure, so we certainly need to get the, to somebody who will help him know if you want us to get jobs, we need infrastructure.
Mr. Bergen, I have a question for you.
Sir.
Is there any way we could have, and we had this discussion earlier today at Concierge Service?
Right.
But, um, along those lines, kind of like a fast attack, where, you know, hey, we got this property, but we, we can get sewer out there in a matter of, you know, days if we need to do that. Is there a way to pull that off? I mean, cause you look at Comfort Road and you've got that manufacturing facility out there, and I don't know if that's enough acres or big enough. Pretty big, pretty big place. But, I mean, there's got to be some answer here other than, you know, cause we are rural, and they can't expect us to have everything completely ready. But if we can, I mean, I know they do.
But they do.
Yeah, no. Yeah, but I mean, you know, hey, we're willing to work with you. Give us thirty days. Give us, you know, I mean.
I, I guess the unfortunate situation with it is, and yes, we do attack things as a concierge service, walking things through as best we can. But when you're competing against the rest of the world, uh, this particular project was also looking at five other states. And we're, we're one pinpoint that can be easily eliminated because we don't have those things in place. And ten other counties or ten other communities do. Uh, yes, there's a lot of rural communities that are in the exact same situation that we're in. And you, you do get the wins at times, but there has to be a specific reason that it really works for that particular company. And that, that's just part of the elimination. That's just how they work.
Didn't we try to run more sewer out there but Veritas Steel? There was some kind of mix-up with that?
Yeah, they pulled out in eleventh hour. Um, there was, um, there was an opportunity, I guess, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, um, where Veritas Steel wanted to come in and, and they were looking at doing some expansion to put an additional bay in and would increase their capacity by about thirty percent. And, um, the city and the county got together at that time, um, came up with the idea of using C D B G as an opportunity to run the additional sewer line, um, based on the county's application, and the city would maintain it. And that was an, an opportunity for us to really work together. And, and when we got to the table, Veritas and the eleventh hour decided that they didn't want to do the project. Um, there were several other businesses out there that were, that were waiting for, that they were sitting in, in Limbo, kind of waiting for that project to come about. Um, we've, we've gone on to DC and to Tallahassee and really pushed for that project to come about. Senator Nelson's office has actually, um, put us in touch with several agencies to try to help get that project spearheaded again. Because we think that, you know, that four hundred feet, um, becomes a critical piece to economic development in this community. And while the properties are in the county, it benefits the city as a whole as well. But it benefits this community because we've got major businesses out there, um, who can, who can increase the number of employees, employees that they have, um, with the Veritas project in itself. We were looking at it like, uh, they were saying it would be another a hundred and twelve million dollars brought into this community, just based upon them being able to increase capacity and build one more bridge. And so when we look at those numbers, the amount that it takes to put in that sewer line, um, which would have come under a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar C D B G grant cycle, is, is far cheaper than the impact that it has on this community. And so we've got to identify those places where we can go in and, and, and really live by the concept that it's, it's better to have it and not need it than need it and not have it. Because there are some times where you have to plan for growth, even though it's not there right away, as opposed to waiting and trying to get ready. Because when those businesses come in, they're looking for the best deal smoking. And if you don't have what they need, then they move to the next spot. You know, there was a company that came in that was looking for two hundred thousand square feet of warehouse space, and they wanted it immediately with those same things just recently. And when you can't deliver, they move on.
I just wanted to add one comment about Veritas. I, I believe the thing that happened with the deal, it wasn't that they didn't want it, but there was a job requirement, a number of new jobs. And I think that they were unsure of their, their work is all bid work. So they were trying to guess out ahead of time, and I think, I just wanted to clear that up. It wasn't that they didn't want the project. There was some difficulty guaranteeing the jobs to get the grant.
Right. But you know, our Better Place Plan is functioning, we can do infrastructure projects with that. So if you take a partnership and we can move that, that line four hundred feet and create jobs and take some of those septic's that are sitting out there, those industries that are out there on the river, it's a win-win situation for everybody. So I, Brian, I'm gonna say, you need to bring us back a, a list of these are our wants. And, and, I mean, honestly, this is, this is why we're losing, and this is how we can win. And commissioners, councilmen?
Are y'all asking for a total list of infrastructure needs that are barriers? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Total, total?
Well, I think the first thing is to prioritize.
Right.
I think the...
That's it, yes. Absolutely. Long list. I just wanted to make sure we were...
It's, it's the prioritize.
Dana light up over that one?
Right. But, but I think it's prioritizing based on, based on several different factors with cost being the greatest. Because the, the thing we've got to look at is there are several avenues for us to gain the resources. If we tied in the job creation, the state has several dollars out there. It doesn't necessarily have to come from Better Place. Um, but that's a tool in our tool chest. But you've got, you've got D E O money, you've got other money that's out there if you tie it into certain projects. And I, I think we just need to start to look at the funding sources. You know, simple things like, uh, I mean, you've got seven billion dollars allocated for new markets tax credits, for example. If certain projects are in place, part of that is improving infrastructure for the purposes of bringing industry in. And so when we start, we just have to get to the, we've got to get to the money folks and figure out which pot of money best applies to Putnam. And I, I think, um, what's happened historically is we just haven't put our list of priorities together and got a consensus by all the working pieces. Everybody's been working in, in their own sector. But we haven't had a comprehensive economic development plan for the community as a whole. And now, you know, this talk is, is state, is, is the first step to, of many steps. But it's a good step because we can all start to come together and say, hey, these are the things that we see are important. And it's important to the chamber, it's important to the city, it's important to the county, it's important to water management, or whomever the other pieces of the puzzle are. But we've got to have that conversation, and if we don't have it, then we, we're not, if, if, you can't play the game without a playbook. And if you, you can't run the plays without it either. And so, you know, we're in a position where our playbook, we've got five playbooks on one team, and everybody's looking at a different sheet of music, and so we've just got to come together and get this thing working.
And the other thing, we also need to put all our assets together, do that asset map, so that we have things that other people don't have. And we need to, to put that out there and then see what we can add to it to make it more attractive for everybody else. And if we come together, we are better together. Whatever happens for Placa happens for Putnam County, and whatever happens for any of the little cities, it helps all of the other cities. So we should lock hands or heads, or whatever we need to do, and, and get to work and stop talking about it. I have, I'm really, Larry, I'm telling you, I've, I've heard the studies to do the studies to do the studies, and that don't, that has not got us anywhere. If we don't roll up our sleeves and even dirty our hands to get where we need to be, each person up here has an asset, has something good to give back to this county. And our commission now, our, is young now, and they, they've, almost everybody... back to this county. And our commission now, our, is young now, and they, they've, almost everybody was born in Palaka. And we see the need to make the uh, quality of life better for all of our citizens. And as we do that, we share it with other cities. So I'd like to say, I, I'd like to thank you and the mayor for really sitting here, starting this thing. And let's not just talk about it. Let's, let's do it. We'll, we'll find ways. And if people find out you really want to help and get stuff done, they'll help you.
I, I encourage everybody, and Commissioner Borm has a comment as well, but I encourage everybody to look at the avalanche study. You know, avalanche consultant, they, you know, they, they put the, they put the nail on the head. And look at that study and, and, and look at the, the recommendations and the comments that came out of it. They did the asset mapping for you.
Yeah.
And the data's there, Commissioner Borm.
Again, yeah, that they took the words right out of my mouth. We do, we, we did complete the uh, asset mapping for the city of Palaka. Uh, we definitely encourage the uh, county to do the same thing if you've not already done so.
We have.
They have.
Okay.
We did it.
And with that being said, those are all of our assets. So we, we know what we have. Um, again, we did miss an opportunity, but several uh, months ago, two or three months ago, we had a, a logic meeting that they talked about putting together um, all of the assets that we have in terms of what we have, big plots of land and other resources like the gas and water and sewer. I don't know how far we got with that, but I, I do know, I think you was there, um, Brian, um, the city manager, mayor, a number of us was here, or was at the meeting or whatever. But I think we need to go back and, and, and figure out what came from that meeting and where we're at with that. And are we moving forward? Because again, we were talking about the GIS mapping and, and, and the like as it related to that. So I, I, I do think we need to continue moving forward with that particular uh, request that was made.
I agree. Yeah, we do, the county has the asset mapping that we recently got through DEO. And frankly, it's sitting on the shelf. We need to pull it off and start using it. And um, we do need one play, but I haven't heard from anybody over to my left yet tonight, no? Everybody's quiet over on that side.
They're waiting for the finale.
No, I think it's, it's going together very well.
Sure. Commissioner Goddard, you don't mind if your wife says something?
My name is Shondale Goddard, one three four Whispering Winds Road. I work for the school district and I'm also the community liaison for the Placa Christian Service Center. But one thing that I want to emphasize while everyone is in this room, I feel I am in, I am an activist in our community uh, in regards to connecting services and resources. And one of the things that I feel is strong importance, thinking outside the box, and whoever will be putting this priority list together, needs to be looking at different quadrants, whether it's based on how many jobs it would provide. Don't just do it as a list as priority. I think it needs to be in a spreadsheet or something that can be um, taken to a point where you, whatever you are searching for, because if it's five jobs that comes in and it's at the lower level, that's not that much money to be spent, that's five more jobs that we can fill. So when we're looking at a priority list, I come to you and ask that we don't just look at as being priority as in this is going to be the big focus. But if we can have that broken down for different categories of what we can do in the small arena as well, so that we can be able to put jobs in place for people in Putnam County. Thank you.
Okay, Dana, come back up for a minute. So you're gonna put your wish list together.
I already got one. It's called the Big Plan. It's an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, prioritized. Yeah, because I think it, what you, what you're hearing tonight is basically, if it makes sense, let's do it. And let's bring jobs back into this county, you know, and, and the city. So-
And it's got small bites that are in, more, less expensive than the larger needs of infrastructure. So it's kind of a real broad range. But Brian and I'll get it back out, dust it off and review what's in it and share it.
I don't believe there's not one person up here that doesn't mind going to Tallahassee or Washington with their hat in their hand. But at the same time, they gotta see that we're making progress. And that's where we're at. Congressman Yeho will be here tomorrow night, and he wants to hear from the people. So, you know, he wants to bring money back to this community also, as well as the people in Tallahassee, our sen- our senator and representative. So it's important. Putnam County's important to them.
But, but I, I also think that it's important that we be on the same sheet of music because-
Yeah, they look at it.
It, the, you know, it, it makes no sense for the municipalities to go to Tallahassee with an agenda that's not, you know, although we're, we're all separate entities in so many ways, but there needs to, but certain priorities need to be the same throughout the county. And, and we, and I, and I think we need to caucus more when it comes to lobbying for this community. Uh, there has to be more dialogue overall, uh, whether that's done through staff, or it's done through, um, through the chairs of, of whatever um, entities that are there. But we've got to get on the same sheet of music overall, so that the message for Putnam County is the same. If, whether it's coming from my mouth, or your mouth, or Mr. Suggs, or from the clerk of court, or whomever, I, I think when the message overall is resounding, and, and they've heard it five times from five different groups, then it becomes real to them. And I, I think when our priorities are different in so many ways, and we're split, then people look at Putnam and say, hey, they need to get their act together. And, and that's not what we want. Because I, I, I think, you know, we've got so much in this community to offer. And it's just a matter of just us just getting on the right track.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great conversation. And we'll look forward to the future of that. Next item is item E, leachate interlocal agreement. Mr. Gash, you're in the room. Why don't you come up and explain what leachate is and uh, the process of, as to how it affects Putnam County and city of Palaka?
We'll bring Mr. Griffin up with him as well.
Come on up, please.
Team up.
All right. Leachate is basically the coffee that comes out of a percolator that you put on top of garbage. When you put clear water into your coffee maker, what comes out the bottom is coffee. It's soaked through, picked up the coffee, drained it out. Leachate is the same thing working with a landfill. It rains on top of the landfill as the rainwater percolates through. What comes out the bottom is leachate.
That's gotta be the, the sweetest.
Assamatic waste in the history of the world.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, that, that's the easiest way to explain it because people see the, the clear water going into their coffee maker, and then you got this black soup that comes out the end of it that you pour in your cup and you drink. I wouldn't recommend that with the leachate, but-
No, we're not. Why don't you explain the process right now that we bring leachate and the city of Palaka brings sludge in exchange for?
Currently, what we have is an interlocal agreement with the city of Palatka, where we bring uh, leachate to the city of Palatka, and we accept their sludge. Both of those are done as a no-charge mutual benefit of services. Um, we have been currently sending almost two million gallons a year uh, to Jacksonville, um, basically because of capacity. Uh, our last analysis we had of our leachate uh, had it at iron, being the only thing that was out of the discharge limits for the city of Palatka. Uh, I am currently looking uh, at the possibility of putting in a package plant, putting in evaporators, uh, looking at several different options, uh, looking at pre-treatment, uh, putting in aerators to try to get, keep the BOD down, try to keep the iron levels down, uh, so the city of Palat could be able to take much more. The problem with my leachate is it's pretty much sterile concerning what a wastewater treatment plant's looking for. So you've got a slug at one time coming through the plant that doesn't have any nutrition for the bugs that are there to digest all the sewage that's in there. And that's the problem that my leachate causes, along with the high iron content. Uh, when you try to use that water as a reuse water after treatment, if you can't get all that iron out, then it can, you know, leave white things yellow or orange. And that is what our huge problem is with our leachate right now. Uh, that's why I'm currently looking at several things to try to get it ready for the budget, which is uh, you know, a pre-treatment, aeration ponds to try to eliminate some of the issues that we have with iron and BODs. Uh, the other is uh, self-treatment, uh, and evaporation, which Waste Management just started. Uh, takes our costs down to about two and a half to three cents a gallon. Where right now, we're paying over nine cents a gallon to have it hauled to Jacksonville. The other issue that we have with leachate is it's all gotta be hauled. We don't have a sewer line that we could put a direct hookup with the city of Palatka. If we had a direct hookup, we could, the city of Palatka could say, you know, send us, you know, five hundred gallons an hour for the next twenty hours, which meters it in, where you don't have that three thousand gallon slug go in at one time and create an issue. Uh, when I was with Orange County, we had uh, unfortunately, a forced main that went right into the head of the wastewater treatment plant. Um, we had our leachate treat, our leachate sent for, to the treatment plant on a timer. It was based on SCADA back and forth between the plant and us. When they had a high enough flow, our pumps kicked on and kicked right into them. So that they didn't have that effect of starving the bugs that you get with a slug being dumped all at one time.
What would be the cost difference of running a line that you're referring to versus a uh, package plant that you referred to?
I have not paid for an estimate of that at this time.
Don't pay for one, just try to figure out one.
Well, the, the problem with that is, is you've got to get your engineering estimates across Rice Creek. You've got to get your engineering estimates for the right-of-ways, for your uh, boring under driveways, your boring under roads, all that kind of stuff to, to get it done. I don't have those kinds-
We gotta get it to the jail, right? If we get it to the jail, then we're home free, right?
Actually, we could probably get it to Comfort Road.
Well, yeah, a little closer, but that's it. Jonathan, you have?
His assessment is spot on. It basically messes with the biology of the plant. Um, and the plant operator likes consistency. When they don't have consistency, as I'm sure you know, they're not happy. Um, we are looking and having conversations with some private entities about the beneficial reuse of our water, as well as our biosolids at our plant. So um, the conversation about revising the interlocal, uh, I'm sure will be coming up, probably not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year. Um, the city of Palaka sees many opportunities for increasing efficiency uh, when it comes to treatment, as well as beneficial reuse of the byproducts of the plant at the um, Lundie Road Station. We got approximately two hundred and fifty acres out there that's not being used to its fullest potential. Uh, so we'll be reaching out to you to discuss that, uh, because it's really not in the city's best interest to take the leachate in its current condition. Um, as you did kind of elaborate, there are some ways that we can improve that. I think we do have a good system in place now where it's being dumped. We get some dilution before it comes into the plant, and that's very beneficial. Uh, but there are some things that we can both do, obviously.
Yeah, and let's um, let, let's talk in terms of numbers. Um, and Mr. Reynolds, maybe you can help us out as it relates to um, the numbers and, and the cost savings um, for taking in the leachate um, versus paying for the, the exchange of the sludge and the leachate and what the savings are for both organizations. Um, and I know we've looked at those numbers before.
Yeah, I, I have those numbers, but I don't have them with me. They're, of course, on our network. And uh, I, I could try to find them real quick. I could try to get on my, my uh, desktop at the office. Because I think I built a, a spreadsheet with all of that information that Jonathan.
Yeah.
I, I kinda looked at some of that earlier today. And basically, the city of Palatka is sending us about twelve hundred tons of biosolids a year, which at the special handling for biosolids, which is a hundred dollars a ton, is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we're sending about two million gallons, one point seven to two million gallons a year to the city of Palatka's wastewater treatment plant. And that's costing us ten cents a gallon. So that's another hundred and seventy thousand dollars that it's costing us to dispose of that material under our current situation. Uh, what your costs are for treatment with upgrades and things like that, that's in your-
Right.
Park. All I can talk about is what my current expenses are and what uh, your current costs would be without the interlocal agreement.
Right. And, and I remember um, the numbers, um, the numbers kind of leaned our way about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars when you added all the additional costs and some of the other things that were in place. Um, and, because it, it leads to um, higher upkeep of the facility in itself. Um, and it, it becomes increasingly difficult with the age of our facility and the things that are going on. We've got a wastewater treatment plant that's ten years past its chef life. And so um, when you add all those factors in, um, you know, particularly with just the, the amount of damage that the leachate can do overall, it, it becomes um, it becomes a kind of a, a burdensome task. But it's, it's, it's necessary at, you know, when this, when it was, when the agreement was entered into, it was really necessary. And it was really a win-win for both organizations because we didn't have the resources to, you know, to pay for our, for our waste to be distributed, nor did the county um, want to extend additional resources at that time. And so it was an example of working together. Um, and I just think it's something that um, we need to tweak or revisit and, and look at other opportunities that are out there.
Well, that's why right now, I'm, I'm basically looking at, at three separate, well, one is a pre-treatment program to make it more acceptable for the city to take our leachate. The other is an evaporation system where basically it does not even go through a wastewater treatment plant. It has an upfront cost of about six hundred thousand dollars. And then we're looking at uh, maintenance cost of anywhere from two to three cents a gallon. Um, don't have to pay for piping, don't have to pay for anything. It's done right on site. The other is a package plant treatment system, and I've got close to two thousand acres that I can use as a wetlands uh, treatment system uh, for the leachate. And those are the, the basic systems that I'm looking at right now. And I'm probably gonna put in for budgeting in this year to take a look at each one of those systems to see what's the, the best means.
What would a system like that cost?
Which system?
The wetland system, ballpark?
Uh, basically, it would go through an aeration pond, a, a package plant. You'd probably be looking at uh, probably eight hundred thousand if you've got a used package plant. Uh, I missed out on two. Kennedy Space Center just had two went up for auction that they took out because they put in a central system, and I didn't find out it, about it till too late. And we could have probably picked it up for almost nothing. And uh, the thing is, is most of our stuff we have doesn't require a sewage treatment plant system. And that's what makes it so difficult. Because it doesn't require a sewage treatment plant system, that's what makes it bad for sewage treatment plant.
Right, correct.
You know, it's a catch twenty-two for us, which, which the best thing for us to do may be one direction, and the best thing for y'all is the opposite direction of the way. Because they're, they're compatible, running them through the system makes through, ev- makes sure everybody's stuff is safe. But my concerns are, as soon as we get a, a call from the plant, we shut down. We don't send anything else because we don't want to knock the plant offline.
Right.
And we can have that opportunity to do it. And that's something that we work very closely together with the city to make sure we don't do those kinds of things. When it gets cold weather, the bugs get inactive in the plant, we slow down our shipments because we don't want to have an adverse im- impact.
Jonathan, you mentioned earlier that it's not beneficial for the city, right, to really deal with this leachate, correct?
Well, I don't want to say it's not beneficial because fiscally, it is beneficial right now. Uh, what I meant was from a biological perspective and from plant efficiency. Um, one example is the reuse water that the city distributes to customers, even though we don't charge for it presently. We've had a lot of users come offline because of the quality of the water.
Right.
Well, if you can imagine, as he explained, when that water comes in and it lacks the biology and the nutrients that the bugs love at the plant, you don't get as much nitrogen reduction. And you also get higher turbidity, which is basically the darkness of the water when it leaves the plant. Those things going to the golf course, holding pond, contribute to algae growth, which then leads to bad product. And people don't use our water, which then means we have to put it somewhere else, be it the airport or the cemetery. And as you can understand, those aren't ideal reuse disposal sites. So it's a very complicated problem. Um, another thing is the high metal content. We can't market biosolids for beneficial reuse if they're high in metals. So these are all things that we're taking into consideration, and we're very appreciative that you're looking at alternatives. I think it's the appropriate time for both entities to be doing it. Uh, but we need to do something different. do something different.
Thank you. Any other conversations from, no, okay. Well, feel free to join in. Just the mayor and the chair's committee, but thank you. We appreciate y'all working together and bringing a solution to this situation. Um, we've been talking about interlocal agreements. Um, I don't believe we probably have all of our interlocal agreements with us tonight, correct? But there you, you're shaking your head, yeah, no? No, we don't, yeah. Um, that is something we need to look at, some of these are really, really old, and, um, it is time that, even with the other municipalities throughout the county.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, um, when we're talking about interlocal agreement, I think from the city perspective, the county, as well as maybe even the school board, I've seen a number of different projects that they've had as it relates to technology, and I know that they have fiber projects that they were going, and that's several hundred thousand, um, several hundred thousand dollars, um, as it relates, I think the county mayor had somewhere around five hundred thousand, uh, the city, I think about two hundred and so thousand, I think, um, the school board had about three hundred and so thousand, but we're talking several hundred thousand dollars, and we're talking fiber loops, which we could probably share that same pathway, and, uh, I've mentioned it to a, a couple of people, um, in both the county, as well as me and Matt, we talked about it. But I think we can really save, um, several hundred thousand dollars if we piggyback in different areas. We don't, we, I mean, on, once we leave our site, then some of the pathways we can share. So we need to kinda talk about that a little bit more, I think. It will help tremendously, um, the city, the county, and I think the school board, so, um, I'd like to revisit that one for, for, for me.
Brandon, is Bob still here?
I see a nodded, I see, I saw a nodded of the head in the back in agreement.
Absolutely.
Well, actually, if you, probably what, a year ago, I'm sorry?
And that project right now has hit a little hiccup, so it may not be too late to, to really talk about.
Absolutely.
Doing that together.
Okay.
Yes. We're talking about almost a million dollars.
And so, it, it's outside of my pay grade, it's more so in commissioner board's pay grade, so.
Well, we can move that needle forward.
We definitely think that, uh...
If Bob was here, we could have that discussion right now, but, uh, yeah, that's what I just heard Brandon's head was, okay, so we'll just move on to, um, and we'll bring that back up, commissioner Borman, thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely.
Is there any other interlocal agreements that we wanna talk about real quick that, that are pressing issue that, uh?
Well, I, I think, I mean, the roadways are definitely, um, I think going back and looking at what we're doing as it relates to, um, maintaining roadways within the city, uh, I'll give you an example with Palm Avenue. Um, when we look at, uh, the Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, one of the simple things that we were dealing with, with two different schools, um, two charter schools, trying to get signage in place, um, to deal with school crossings and things of that nature. Um, you know, between dealing with DOT and dealing with the interlocal, um, you know, trying to create, you know, trying to create a simple solution to a problem, it took several months just to be able to, to really outline what needed to be done to come up with the solution for school safety, something that should've been, you know, we, we could've addressed really quickly. Um, and so, when we look at that interlocal, I think we have to look at how the city has changed since the interlocals have been put into place, and how the county has expanded, and, and what needs to be in place to really make it, um, an easier sweep, because, um, we find ourselves so many times doing just what those enclaves do. Um, you'll have a, a, a county crew, um, or county work crew work an area, and then have to jump over an area to go somewhere else to deal with an issue that can probably be dealt with in-house. And so, I, I think if we look at it from, you know, from a different perspective, making sure that it makes sense from a cost-wise, um, standpoint will be fine. But there's another guy in this room, um, who has, um, I think, a, a great knowledge point for both the county and the city, kinda sits in the back and sits in the seat of, um, city clerk, um, who's, you know, who's gone down this road before, I know, um, as it relates to what's going on, and, you know, without putting you on the spot, I'd love to hear from you, because I, I know there's a wealth of knowledge as it relates to some of the issues that we're talking about now. Um, and if you don't mind, Mr. Smith, we'd love to hear from you.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, thank you for inviting me to come up and speak, cause my plan was not to speak tonight.
We knew that wasn't gonna work.
But since you asked.
Since you told me earlier, yeah.
Yeah, yes, I, I actually did mention it. Uh, you know, these issues that we're talking about today, uh, have been talked, uh, about for a number of years, as Vice Mayor Brown mentioned. Uh, there are solutions to every one of these, but what it takes is fortitude, it takes leadership, and it takes, uh, courage. Uh, so as you talked about these various issues, um, I was thinking about, you know, first when you talked about the enclaves and the in and out of the city limits, and we've discussed that for years. Um, so that either means that you have to go down one of three paths, and I guess the attorneys would probably correct me if I'm wrong, but one would be voluntary annexation, involuntary annexation, which, uh, can be, uh, difficult to achieve, cause you have to have referendums and the people have to vote for those things. Or it could be that you work together and you establish a service district, which says from this line east, this line north, this line south, the city of Palatka's gonna be responsible for that, to provide those services, water, sewer, police, fire, garbage. But that means that there's some revenue that has to come, what currently funds the county, to the city to cover those costs.
Right.
Um, you spoke about, uh, the, uh, the business park and the industrial, uh, complex. Uh, those are also solutions that we've talked about for a number of years. Uh, I actually have the pleasure as serving as your chairman of the Development Authority, and these are items that we do discuss, of how we get our community ready for those requests that come in. Uh, that's a great tool that you have in this county, is the Development Authority, uh, one that was established by the legislature by a special act, uh, decades ago, to assist, uh, the industrial development of our community. Uh, at one point in the life of the Development Authority, it was, uh, a, a very busy entity, was used a lot, uh, to assist, particularly industry that came in, first that needed access to facilities, uh, but second, that needed, um, access to financial, uh, resources to make their operation work. So, I will offer to you also the, uh, work of the Development Authority, because most of you sit on that, uh, to, uh, help move some of these issues from, particularly from those, uh, business and industrial, um, questions that you had earlier, uh, to help move that along. And it's a good tool, because no one in that room has to, uh, take ownership of their particular assets. This is assets that are good for the county. Um, and so I think there are, are opportunities for us, uh, to continue to move forward. But just as you remember, a few months ago at your meeting, there was some criticism of the debt service on the sewer and water plant in East Palatka, East Putnam. Um, just like the city of Palatka, it, these systems take decades to become break even. But it's not just the cost of the debt service on it, it's the benefits that it provides to the community, not only to the citizen for those services, but for the business community. And so, you have to take a very long view of these, uh, opportunities that you have in front of you today, and know that the payoff comes later. But this community is never gonna move forward until the courage and the leadership from all of you say, that's gonna be our view, and that's gonna be our goal, and we're gonna take that today, and we're gonna start moving forward with it. And we know that we'll struggle for some number of years, uh, to make that work, but in the long run, the payoff does come back to us. This is a great community. This is a wonderful county. We have the best people in the world that live in this, uh, in our area. Uh, you can see it by the contributions that are made to March of Dimes and to Relay for Life, and for, uh, all of those activities. We give at a higher per capita giving than most communities in Florida. So, we know in our heart, we do this because we love our community. And so, I would encourage you to take this today as a beginning point, uh, for a brighter and better future for Putnam County. I would encourage everyone in our community to also take that same view, and to join the team, and to move this forward. And whatever I can do to assist that, I'm here to help you and look forward to it. So, those are my comments, and I thank you, Mayor, for asking me up.
Okay, we, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the words of wisdom.
Thank you. All right, council members, commissioners, anything else on interlocal? All right, y'all are quite a bunch. Tourism, item G. Let's talk tourism for a while. Dana, you wanna come back up and let's talk tourism?
Brian, that's Brian up as a way for you.
Yeah, I know, you weren't prepared, but that, we're just having discussions. You know, we see a lot of good things, Dana, in this county as far as, and I remember, I was telling someone the other day, serving on the chamber board, years ago, when eco-tourism came out, and kind of was a little, eh, well, that's never gonna really take off, and boy, did that take off, right? And it was new to all of us, and we didn't know really what it meant, and, uh, but now it's really, so kinda give us a brief rundown of where we are, where we're at in tourism in Putnam County, and what we look like, and how we can get better in that market, too.
I'll try and do that with absolutely zero notes, except some little bit of bed tax information I have with me. Um, tourism is doing very well in Putnam County. Um, I'm very proud to say, just today, I was running numbers from our increase in the bed tax revenue, and again, that's taxes paid by our visitors, not our residents. But we have increased that bed tax sixty-three percent in six years.
Wow.
Which is just amazing. I think during the years of the recession, we actually saw growth in the employment sectors for hospitality and tourism. Um, you know, another good success, and if y'all recall, back through the recession years, we were also hosting Bass Elite and Bike Florida and other large events, which really contributed to that increase in bed tax. Um, the Tourist Development Council is the entity, the authority, I guess, that makes recommendations on what we do with these funds. The B O C C is the, um, authority that approves those. So I would say to you, those Tourist Development Council members and Board of County Commissioner members have certainly done a great job in allocating the money in the good places that have grown that revenue, cause we have really jumped up, like I said, sixty percent. Um, nature-based tourism, I think, is what we're calling it today. I'm not sure, you know, eco-tourism one day, and then it's nature-based. Um, you know, and it goes back probably twenty-five years of my time at the chamber. When we began working on what we called the Master Trails Plan, we had, I can't even remember if we had any pavement on the ground, quite frankly. So, once the Rails to Trails started for the backbone of the Trails Plan, and then some of the entities came along, like the Putnam C S O and Bartram, and started doing some product development, really launched us, you know, like you said, on the national map, you know, when the Bartram Trail was honored, uh, nationally, um, I think it just really elevates us to having a whole different set of assets to market, to a whole new market of people as well. So, I don't know if you have specific questions, or if that was the kinda roundup you wanted, but...
You know, what, what I think the public doesn't realize is all the things, Mayor Hill and I were together Saturday at two out of three or four event.
Three out of four.
Yeah.
There's a lot going on.
You know, and the comment was made at Putnam Hall, was if you, if you live in Putnam County and you say there's nothing to do on the weekend, you just don't get out. I mean, we're all busy, and we all can be busy all day long.
Yes.
And it's a, finally, you just give, give up and go home, and go, I've done all I can do.
There are events on our calendar year-round now.
But I was noticing at the last T D C, Tourist Development, we have commissioners against acronyms here.
Tourist Development Council.
Yeah, Tourist Development Council. That, the direct correlation, and explain that a little bit to all of us and to the public, the direct correlation of, of events, heads and beds, and the tax that it pays off, cause you showed some figures on that the other day. That was really impressive.
Okay, you mean, why they focus on heads and beds when they do grants?
Well, we have an event, let's say that there's, you know, Catfish Festival, for example, or there's, there's Blue Crab, or there's Bass, or...
Right.
But we can see the direct correlation to the money we invest.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. When I was actually reviewing the bed tax numbers, and I said that, um, in March of twenty sixteen, we had our highest collections ever in the history, and we've been having the bed tax since nineteen ninety-two was our first year of collections. So in all those years, our highest month was in March of sixteen, and that's when the Bass Elite was here. Um, there was also some stays from the Georgia Pacific Construction Project that does also alter those numbers. Um, just the first quarter this year is ahead twenty-two percent from last year. So that, that growing pattern we're seeing at twenty percent a year, twenty percent a year, is still going on, and it's just a large collection, you know, in October, I think I pointed out, in October was another high year, which was unusual for sixteen, but that was when we had the, the Bartram Conference, and we had the, um, one of the other Bass tournament groups here, but we had two or three. And I had better notes then, because I was preparing for the Tourist Development Council meeting. Um, but we, we could actually point to the months of high collections and which events we had during that period of time.
Right. Bro, just hit us in the ballpark of how much money the tourist development tax brings in, the heads and beds tax, if you will, in a given year.
Okay, well, our, our last, I'm gonna do, calendar year of sixteen was three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Twenty eleven, it was two thousand and nine, seven hundred dollars. That's, that's the growth that we're talking about. Now, this is small bed tax collections for most Florida counties, most of them are on the coastal communities, and they get twenty-two million and ten million dollars. But for a rural community like ours, and that kind of growth is really astronomical.
I'll tell you something else that, um, has helped us out with bed tax overall, just looking at Walmart, the Walmart Academy. Walmart identified Putnam County based on economics as a place that they wanted to come in and help, and with the Walmart Academy, for six weeks, they bring in people from all over the country, and they li, they live in Putnam County hotels, they eat in our restaurants, and, and they're a part of this community, and they rotate different classes of people in to go through those, walk to, through that academy all year round, and they've only got a handful of these academies throughout the country, but they, they handpick, I talked to the coordinator of that site, and they handpicked Palatka as a place that they saw that they could make an economic impact in, um, by providing, um, you know, the hotels, uh, and providing the, the bodies here, and, and really starting to bring, to drive some tourism in this area as well.
Mm-hmm.
So what can we do to make tourism better in Putnam County throughout?
If we had all the money in the world and all the people in the world on my staff to help, what all could we do? Do you want me to write another big plan? There's some little things, you know, the cleanup effort's really important, a lot of people kinda overlook that, that visitors don't really like to come back and spend another vacation if the first time they came here, um, we weren't really nice looking. So we need to really focus a lot more on that than we do probably, um, in general, I mean, I'm talking people, everybody. Um, you know, working together on these events, and I know there's a lot of our organizations that help our outside organizations, you know, our, I think the Putnam County C S O helps our Iron Horse Coordinator, you know, they serve at different stations. So there's people that do really good things to make it easy for, I call them external coordinators, they don't live here, they just come here to do their event, you know, Wilson's Bass Tournament is an example of that. Um, you know, everything that we can do to help people who bring in groups of people certainly will help tourism grow and prosper.
But you see, um, um, and, and I guess one of the things we've been looking at is the need for a conference center, um, some, something that will hold, an, an event center that will hold something other than a small conference center. We've kinda limited conferencing to the Ravine Gardens and to, um, the Riverfront Inn.
And that keeps me from being able to bid on conferences. Uh, as a tourism entity, if I had a conference center that held the two hundred people, that was attached to the hotel, um, we, we have enough hotel rooms now, but we don't have a conference center, so it would help, too.
And so we had a major hotel chain come in, um, I guess, what, about two months ago? They came in about two months ago, and they looked at the community, they looked at the needs of the community, and, and on-site, um, their national coordinator, their national site coordinator was in place, and they, um, they saw the need to approve, you know, two new hotel sites and a conference center, and we've had some other, you know, some other entities come in and kinda see the same thing. Um, I think one of the things that we could do from a tourism standpoint is really look at, um, the feasibility of having a conference center in, and it may be something that all entities kinda pool resources for. And it may be something that all entities kind of pool resources for. You know, we look at other financial opportunities, bricks and mortar grants that may be out there as well. But I think if we have that, then we start to drive, drive that force even more. Sam Carr was in over at the Commission today during the C R A meeting, talking about the momentum that's come in place as it relates to the Bartram Festival as a whole. And there's still pieces of that puzzle historically that they're still tying in because the history is so great. And I think if we start to capitalize on the assets that we have in this community and we create those opportunities for people to come in here by way of conference center, by way of some other things, then we're going to continually get that, we're going to continually get really some of that overflow from St. Augustine because the history of Palaca is just as rich and the history of Putnam County is just as strong in all sectors. And there are a lot of places that we really under-advertise our community. And, you know, we were talking about logic and the advertising, the concept of the advertising plan. I think overall, there's a need to rebrand our community first internally so that our people really know about the rich history of this community.
One brand, right?
One brand.
There you go.
One brand. And again, it goes back to consensus building. And I think that once we start to tell the story of Putnam County, tell the story of Palaca and that, and the people in the community know what it is to be proud of. They know about the Bartram history, they know about Central Academy, they know about some of the downtown businesses, they know about Lemon Street, all these different things, you know, they know about the ecotourism. You know, they, then they can start to spread the word better. But when we feed ourselves with negativity, you know, all that stuff goes into play because when certain people begin to talk negatively about the community to an outsider, it doesn't, it doesn't create an opportunity for someone else to want to venture in and really see the gem that's here.
Yeah, I understand. I get criticized sometimes because somebody will invariably tell me, well, I don't ever see you marketing anything. And I just look at him and say, if you see our marketing efforts, we're doing it wrong. You know, our goal is for somebody who does not live in a driving distance to see our commercials, our ad pieces. So a local resident wouldn't necessarily see an ad or a commercial where we're trying to market somebody to kind of spend vacations here. So, you know, it's hard. But every time we add an asset, whether it's a meeting room facility, it gives us a new market to go after and advertise to. And we have to, quite frankly, stay within a niche area of something we have because of our limited dollars. Three hundred thousand is not very much money in bed tax collections, and that has to go a long way. So when we start prioritizing where we're going to advertise, it's to where we know we can get people who are going to come and stay in a certain segment, so.
So a convention center would be very advantageous for this community, would it?
It would open up a new market. We would go after small conferences.
And I think that's somewhere that the city and the county can actually start to work together towards, to share in costs or at least looking at it from a speculative standpoint, to see if it's something that's feasible because it's going to benefit both of us. And I think in ways that we haven't seen, not only in tourism, but I think also from a business operations standpoint. Because Palaca's, we're essentially located, Putnam is essentially located throughout the state, and it's a lot easier to bring in people from all over the state to a centrally located location as opposed to, you know, trying to have that conference in Pensacola or in Miami or somewhere else and only, and kind of fragmenting the people that they're trying to reach if it's statewide.
Well, I like to share some with you as well. I mean, I don't think we should limit, limit the advertisement or whatever to just people who are external because we do have people who are internal or live in the City of Palaca or Putnam County that does not know all of the assets that we have here. You know, we have the Water Works, we have the Tillman House, we have the Bronson House. And we have people who don't even know that these things exist.
I, I agree, that's correct. But unfortunately, our funding is limited by statute, and we have to only use it to market externally. We cannot use any funds from the Tourist Development Council to market internally to our residents. But you're right, you're absolutely right. There are many people here that need to know about our tourism assets and they do not know.
I agree. Dana, thank you again for everything.
Sure.
We appreciate it. We are kind of, we're running over a little bit, we're going to try to move this real, forward real quick. Was this good for everybody so we can look at future meetings and start moving that needle forward? Okay, we'll get Stacy Papel and Mr. Suth, and we'll get together and, and start making some future dates. Item number four, Stacy Papel, any comments?
Other than this is, this has been productive. This is, I'm really proud of our county and our city.
Terry, Mr. Suth, any comments?
I want to move back to future meetings.
Okay. If you'll grab the microphone so they can put it on record?
Just moving back really quickly. It was stated earlier, I'm one of those individuals that we don't want to meet just to meet, we want to meet to make moves. And I think when we want to make moves, we make it happen. And I think my recommendation is that we meet at least quarterly to come and discuss things. And I think that's just enough time to, if there are things that we discuss in this meeting, to implement them or try them out and come back, and it doesn't allow us to lose that focus. So my recommendation would be at least quarterly.
Thank you, I agree with that. Maybe we can look at sometime in July of trying to put something together from some of the topics you heard tonight. Terry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, thank you. No, I think this has been a great opportunity for us to kind of sit down and start having some conversations on, on a lot of the things that are important and very germane to both Putnam County as well as Palaca. And as you can tell, there's already some synergy and some stuff that are projects that are being worked on together. And I think that's a very positive and a, and a, and a nice step in the right direction. So I just, I echo the comments that were made here tonight. I think it's very positive. I think Clerk Smith said it very eloquently. I think this is an opportunity for us to continue doing something that's very important to both Putnam as well as Palaca and all of our surrounding communities, so look forward to the next meeting.
Good, thank you. Putnam County Attorney, Stacy Manning?
Enough.
Haven't heard you say anything, but that's.
Isn't that a good thing?
I don't know.
Your lawyer doesn't say much? Means you're doing something right.
Okay, good, good. City Attorney, Mr. Holmes?
I'll echo Mr. Manning's comments.
Good deal. Clerk of the Court, we've heard from Tim Smith, any closing comments? Okay, Palaca City Clerk, Betsy Driggers, any comments? Okay, starting to my.
I just wanted everybody to take note of the technology.
And we've been doing that.
Okay, starting to my left, Councilwoman Williams?
I'm, I'm just excited. We've had some meaningful dialogue tonight and I'm, I'm looking forward to taking the information that we received tonight and doing something with it so that when we meet again at the table, we can say we've done this and we've done that. I think it's important that when we do get our list and tackle it, we need to be able to inspect what we expect also. So we just, we just, I'm, I'm ready, I'm excited to move forward with this, what we're doing and.
Thank you.
Seeing some changes. Thank you.
Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, I just think it's been a very productive meeting. And I want to thank Chairman Harvey and Mayor Hill for putting this together and for the City Commission and County Commission to come together. It sounds like this has been something that I've been trying to do for a long time, and I think it's been productive. Like Mr. Campbell said, I do think when we meet again, we, we need to be prepared to work forward to start moving on some of these issues, not just talking on them. So I think it's a very productive meeting.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah, I'm just going to thank everybody for being here. And we are honestly trying to work together and it's, it's great to see. It's just, I hear it out there and it's good to see it. I think we covered a lot of good grounds tonight. And I think our next meeting is going to be even much more productive.
Good. Councilwoman Brown?
Well, I want to say, let's get it done. I'd like to see some of this stuff happen before I die. Since I'm the oldest one here, we've been talking about it for a long time. And everybody that sits up here has some expertise. And I think that people in our communities have others and they're willing to do it. We just got to stop talking about it and get it done. And I want to thank you, Chairman of the County Commission, and my mayor and our managers, both city and county, for working to help pull this together. Because my saying, and I say it to our, our commissioner all the time, we're better together.
I agree, thank you. Councilman Ben Brown. Campbell, I'm sorry, I don't know what I was thinking.
This is a step forward for our community, the City of Palaca, the county as a whole. I think it's a good look. It shows the transparency that we want to have within this community. We don't want to have that system whereas people know that the decisions are already made prior to meetings or we just don't want, that we want everyone to know we are at the table, we are at the table together. The information that you are receiving, we are all receiving together. And again, this is very much a step forward. Because if, like I said, we've been wanting this for years and to make it finally happen, it speaks volumes. It speaks volumes to when we took that oath of office, what we stood for as individuals as a whole and individually. And I'm just excited, I sat quiet, but I have a burning on the inside, I have a fire on the inside that I'm ready to make things happen. And I'm one of those individuals I don't want to meet if we're just meeting to have dialogue. I want to meet to have meaningful dialogue, to come up with solutions to the problems that we are faced with here in our community. And we know that we have issues here in this community. And I think with us coming together, outside of the logic meeting, having the minds of the individuals that are making the decisions at the forefront as we are tonight is going to move this county and move this city in the direction in which it needs to go. Because I always say that we want to be known as that what's up city, that happening city, that happening county because great things lie here in Putnam County.
Thank you, thank you, very well put. Councilman Born?
Well, yeah, again, I'm, I'm very excited and very, very proud of the effort that was made by both our mayor and our county councilman, to, I mean, chairman, to put this meeting together. I mean, it was a needed thing. In the past, it looked like we were working in parallel, but now we're merging our resources together. We have some synergy and I think we have the right momentum right now to continue to make Palaca and Putnam County a much better place to live, work, and play.
Thank you. Mayor Hill?
First of all, Commissioner Harvey, thank you. We've been working two years to get this meeting in place. It's been really a long journey to get this meeting in place. And I echo what Commissioner Campbell says. I don't want us to just come out of here talking about, we can all assess the problems, but we need to come out of here with a plan. And, you know, we've talked about some things that we can work on together. But one of the suggestions that I have, and, and, you know, while having the ten people up here sitting on the dais is great. There's so many people with working knowledge of this community, the Allegra Kittens, the Felicia Nelsons, and, you know, the, the people that are sitting in this audience. We got to stop closing our forums off to everybody else. My suggestion for this committee, as we continue to meet in our joint sessions, is to think about creating a joint task force where we start to address those, those areas of life for Putnam County. And we create a joint task force with citizens who have great knowledge in areas. You know, we've got Linda Kreider, who lives in the City of Palaca, who knows more about planning than I'll ever know. And, you know, and who does a great job bringing in certain entities into this community. And we need to tap into those resources as a whole. And I suggest that, you know, in our joint sessions, that we strongly look at creating a task force for the core areas of life to assist staff. Because one thing that's going on in this community, we're short-staffed and every area in the staff has enough stuff to do on a daily basis. But we've got, we've got really loving citizens who are willing to step in if we just ask. You know, we're not going to change Palaca with the ten of us. We're not going to change Putnam County with the ten of us. But if we lead and we listen to the people and we start to ask for those resources that we have in here and we utilize them. You know, when you talk about, really when we start to talk about surge and we start to talk about sea level rise, there's, you've, you've got Bob Bernstein in this community. And, you know, we, we need to use those assets that we have. And I suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we, that we, that we, we get authority from our commissions, from all the municipalities involved, and we create a task, a countywide task force that addresses core areas of life. And we have that task force report back on a periodic basis. And we give them certain tasks to look at and ways to move this community forward. And they give recommendations back to us as we create this agency to move us forward.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to say thank you to everyone who came tonight and the council members in the City of Palaca. This is not the end of it. It's not, we're going to move forward and we're going to have not only constructive dialogue, but we're going to have action plans to deal with. Again, we wanted to have these meetings to rise City of Palaca and Putnam County, and we're going to do that. So hearing another business before this council, Mayor, you ready? Meeting adjourned, thank you.